We'll call this workshop meeting of the Central Prairie School District order at 5:01 PM, August 21st, 2019. So this is a board work session to review our goals from 2018-19 of last year. See which ones we can check off and which ones are going to get rolled over and then to create a set of goals for 1920. And with that, on the green sheet, Theresa was nice enough to print off last year's goals for us to take a look at. Number one, implement the instructional technology plan developed along ITSE standards. Number two, continue to evaluate and improve technology infrastructure. Three, complete long-range facility plan by February 19 and determine next steps. Four, promote and enhance STEM education through professional development and use of community resources. And number five, review and revise strategic plan. Where are we on number one?
You bet. Close the door here.
I don't know what point. There's lasagna and french bread up there if we want to just have a working meeting here.
Yeah, that was the intent. Well, I think the interesting thing about number one is that we all recognize that the technology plan is a living document. So if your first criteria is that we've implemented the plan, we have a foundational plan that includes the ideals that we wanted as far as infrastructure and teacher preparation and the beginnings of instructional, then I believe, and Luke, please advise on this, but I think the initial goal is, I would say is completed, but you might want to consider technology as an ongoing goal, perhaps as it relates. I think whatever goal you have, technologies, any instructional goal, any professional development goal is going to have some influence, will have technology as a part of it. So, but it may not need to have its own specific goal like number one. That's my thought.
I'd agree with Mr. Wilson on goal one. The continuance of the technology plan, or technology committee, that's continuing. I think the first startup meeting's coming up here. So that's ongoing. As Mr. Wilson stated, the revised or the ongoing living document plan, so that's something that has been written and I guess can be changed at any time, I guess, as time goes forward. I mean, and so for number two, number two is also, I feel, you know, it's connected to the committee as well.
I would agree.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And continuing to evaluate that. But these again, as the things are going to change every year.
So do we want to... Well, yeah.
Can do is, yeah, this is part of our...
Maybe combine one and two.
That's what I was, can we roll those two in?
Yeah.
Make one out of that so we can add some new goals. I think they fit each others. Using the technology plan...
Okay.
...to determine what technology infrastructure and network and bandwidth, all that, that we need to support the technology plan or something to that effect.
Do we want to add anything in there about the committee? I mean, just saying, with the advisement of the technology committee?
Well, I think you established when you accepted the plan that it was done as it's, yeah, it's kind of a subcommittee of the board.
Right.
And so in that sense, it's been established. I know there was some talk about trying to make that committee a little bit more formally recognized, but I think, as Andy said at a previous public meeting, it was actually during bargaining, that the, certainly the intent is, you know, technology's not going to go away. So regardless of who's in leadership, I believe the core essence of it will always be a part of the work of the board.
Okay, well, we can, so number one will be tech-related. We can come back around to it and do a little word smithing in a second. What is, I just want to figure out which ones from last year we want to check off or carry forward. The long-range facility plan, I mean, as far as the branch requirements go, if that part is complete, where we go from here is the big question mark.
Right.
I think it's still important to use what we've been given from the completion of the grants and the information they presented us and use that as a tool to start figuring out what our actual, what our plan is.
Yeah, so yeah, I would agree. We add, you know, continue with the long-range planning process after, however we want to. We want to word it.
Okay.
Turn it into something intelligent here.
I agree.
This, number four, STEM.
Yeah, that's kind of a... I was going to say of the five, of these first four goals, that's probably the one that is least developed.
Yeah.
Again, I believe considering any type of integrated curriculum is optimal, you know, you want to include as many courses in or emphasis as this one is. And certainly, again, it comes back to the technology, that these emphasis is in science and technology and engineering, math, again, are not going to go away. And so, but I would agree that it would be, if that's important to the board, to be a major goal, then that would be one that you'd want to continue.
What was the intent of the use of community resources statement in that?
It's a good question. I think it was...
I wish we could remember.
Yeah. No, I think it was probably along the lines of there are many retired professionals in the area that have, you know, expertise in engineering and some of the, and actually all four of those areas. And so collaborating with them, using them as guest speakers, advisors on projects, I think that was the intent of the goal.
Did any of that happen?
Not to my principals. Mr. Metzger will be back. He's also running his ninth grade orientation tonight, but...
I don't think anything on an official capacity at all.
Yeah.
I think there was some where volunteers would come in and help with watershed stuff or something like that, so.
And then at Riley Creek, you guys did have a technology night, a STEM night, a family activity night.
That's great.
Yeah. So that's just an example, I think, of trying to, again, bring the community in and use the resources we have to promote that.
Was there some talk, I vaguely remember, of also like government entities, Forest Service, Fish and Wildlife, that was some of the other community resources, I think, that might have been brought up in that conversation, I believe.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Yeah, that was definitely a multi-year goal. That wasn't a one-off, check it off the list type. And then number five, review and revise strategic plan. I think we reviewed it, but I don't think we revised it in any way.
Yeah. And I believe the intent was after the previous strategic plan, which I think was five years ago or so, between five and six years ago.
Yeah.
Was the result of an accreditation review at the high school and it began, again, it was the catalyst to begin some significant change. So coincident, well, yeah, coincidentally, we just completed another accreditation cycle. So again, I don't, I don't know if it had, has the same, because I'm not familiar with what the last accreditation was, but definitely there was a time when the community was engaged in those next steps for the district. And, you know, the foundation came out as that as an example, as a byproduct of that or as a partnership. So whether it's, again, having a, bringing the current strategic plan as is, back for discussion and revising it, we could, we could do that during a meeting. Yeah, it's your pleasure. And again, do the editing. It's very similar to what you're doing with your goals tonight.
Sure. Yeah, I don't think Nancy and Kaylee have probably even seen it.
Some of the strategic things are some global statements, but there might be some revisions of those, I think. Again, because there have been some, there has been movement and improvement in some of those areas since that time. So revising it is a good, good thing.
Do we want that to be a yearly, a year-long goal or do we want that to be like an agenda item for one meeting?
Just make it regular behavior.
Yeah, yeah.
Versus placing a goal on it.
I agree.
Not wasting, but...
Yeah. No, I'm with you.
With the intent to a yearly review so it doesn't get in cobwebs and get put on the shelf.
I'm in total agreement with you. Okay, so we've got three. We've got tech, infrastructure, long-range plan, and STEM. If we're not, you know, hard and fast on five, but anymore, five, six is plenty for fiscal.
Well, Andy, at this point, if I may, I'd like to address the board with a couple of different ideas forward. So in preparing for tonight, I've been wrapping around in my brain, kind of, and it stemmed from your last work session with the PSP program, the training, that the board itself has its own goals, if you will. And then there are district goals, which that's what I would consider, these really, I would consider more district improvement goals, if you will. And then how do the two of those integrate? And with the idea that the combination of your work as a board combined with the district improvement goals then lead to my goals, and then the trickle-down effect, and then what, how does that impact daily instruction, operations, and so on? So I have put together, I did some searching, and you know, I've been a proponent of always stealing from those who make it public and you can steal from, rather than reinvent the wheel. And so I just, I went out and I did some various school districts who are on the ball and have already established their 19, 20 goals, or are in the, or some 18, 19 goals. I just, again, want to show you some different formats, maybe to help guide this instruction. So, and in no particular order, so Fern Ridge was the first one. So you see, they've started with their vision statement to be kind of at the top of any document they do. So that idea of whatever we do, we come back to our vision. And then kind of as a sub-goal of that, here was their big picture. The big picture then is going to be your strategic plan or your five-year goal or whatever, okay? So in this one, I won't get deep in the woods, in the weeds on this, but in this one, you can see they've established four goals, and I think that area of four to five is workable because you don't want to, you know, be like me and try to pick nine goals and not do any of them very, no. Create too many that you lose focus, okay? And so in this one, you can see they want to reach out to their, their community as far as what board direction is, comprehensive review of their student staff success, personnel, and inviting the community and families to be a part of the process. So I think if you were to read through these, we're going to see some common themes. So hold that thought. The next one, I think, is Baker. So yeah, they use a similar format. And again, if you look at their four or five goals, you're going to see a cross-section of, I believe, what they would be, what I just called a few months ago, board goals and then improvement goals. Because you've got things like strategic investment, a transparent budget process, looking at your diverse community and how it, how it, everything you do addresses the whole community, collaborative leadership, you'll recognize that term from our PSP, creating the community plan in our facilities, that goes back to our long-range goals. I see two goals here around careers. So again, in that pendulum swing in education, I just realized the other day, this is my 39th year in education, and so to see it swing back and forth and back and forth from everyone's in voc ed to everyone goes to college and now we're back in, swinging towards colleges necessarily for everyone, but where are our tradespeople, where are our mechanics, electricians, and blah, 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 okay? So interesting observation there. Newburg has, looks like four, four, five, five goals there. Man, it looks like actually six, if you go to the back to that, that are just kind of the bullets of main ideas, again, with the ideas that the activities could go below. Pendleton has their four big, so this one, I think, is kind of the closest to what I might suggest as a, as a good model, is that you kind of have your four main goals that are broad and then the activities that go underneath each one. And then finally, I believe Whitburn has done a great job of making a one-page document that has your goals, the improvement goals, and then the superintendent goals all on one, on one page. So I don't know if you want to, any questions or comments on some of these documents, like, sorry, better preparation would have been to get these out to you before tonight, but in tying in with the other topics we are going to talk about tonight in the regular session, these are, again, kind of ongoing topics or traditional goal ideas that I believe, again, are priorities for our district, I think our principals and their data would share that and support that as well. So if I may, can I just, I'll finish this part and then...
Sure.
All right. So then I, do you like, would you entertain the idea of having a couple board goals and then some, do you like that structure or do you like what you have already?
No, I, well, we've talked about it before. I like that, always kind of like the idea of separating, we have some things we need to do for district business versus improvement, you know? Yeah, I don't have a problem kind of separating them into a, separating, yeah, something to that effect. Because it kind of, you know, there's business as usual stuff and then there's long-term.
Yeah.
Also, I think it allows you to kind of be creative and maybe kind of dream a little bit, right? I mean, with the board goals and then separating it from the goals of the district.
Okay. So if we talk about the board goals, I'm going to take a creative moment. I'm just going to move the whiteboard for our videographer just a little bit, just so you might include that. Anyway, so again, these were just some ideas that you might consider. So in the area of the board goals, I thought that one would be the completion of this, the PSP, the Promise Scholarship Program, so the training you're going through, complete PSP. And again, if we wanted to get deep into the details of what are the, what's in that curriculum of the PSP as it addresses professional development, your own professional development, your conversations around shared leadership, da-da-da-da-da-da. And then I think another common theme that I saw through at least the five examples I gave you was how to engage the community. And I, again, I believe Renee, last week, at your work session, talked about how exciting it was after we did the last training and we had a room full of teachers and there was, the board was connected with the staff and there was a great momentum shift. When was the last time that happened? Two years ago. And so is this another time where we can go back and reconnect with those relationships? And not just with staff, but whether that's students or community, the business world, wherever that is. So those were a couple ideas I came up. Is anyone else thinking of anything else? And again, not saying we need to adopt this tonight, but...
I'd kind of forgotten already about our training program. That, the work involved with that alone is going to create a fair amount of...
And if you just want to do one goal, that might be enough in itself. Actually, related to that, I got a phone call today from Pam Leibarger. You might remember she was colleague that came down with Renee. And during our training, she talked about a new pilot superintendent evaluation tool. And Pam has been, she's taken the lead on that. And she is asking, she asked if this board would be interested in being a part of the pilot in the sense that they're going to pick one or two, or essentially two from each classification, you know, small school, medium school, high school, and then align, align the work with what you're already doing as part of your PSP training, that is, that the superintendent's goal structure and so on is a part of your training. This would be, this would require more training. And again, that's why I didn't, I couldn't speak for you, but it would be three more three-hour sessions. Now, I didn't want to commit for you to say if you wanted to be a part of that pilot. So think about that. I did beg off to say we could probably make a decision next week after talking with Renee. You may find out that what you're already doing, this 16-hour commitment, might be just enough. So anyway, that's just a quick aside. I'm going to change colors just because I have so many.
Yeah, and, yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Evaluate superintendent is another one of those, you know, scheduled things that already needs to happen.
Right. And I believe the structure that Scott started last year with the help of the current OSBA template, I mean, I think that was, that met our needs, I think. And so I, I'm not promoting necessarily that we jump off and be a part of something new when you've actually just had, only had one-year experience with the current model. But I wanted to have you all have that, that decision. These are, as far as making your improvement goals, these are just some things that are somewhat traditional, again, but again, are things that I think are good investments in your making decisions around your goal. First of all is academic achievement, you know, that idea of we try to showcase student achievement every, every month or so. But I think that's an area where we need to always continue to focus all of our energies, our questions about our finances, our resources, how well is it doing, how well are our kids Some, as you're going to see tonight when I do a brief legislative review, social, emotional health is a major topic of almost every educational reform. Along with that is an equity lens. So and again, I know I'm one of those that got kind of caught up in this early on, but that idea of equity not just being race, but gender, all the protected classes, and when we make a decision or a process, have we actually gone through a look-through as through the lens of all the different protected classes? And again, requirements for any grants, any of this new billion-dollar money we're talking about, equity is going to be a part of that discussion. Our principals today are prepared to tell you that one of the major issues in our school is student attendance. And last year, as a school district that was in kind of a level two, we were in the yellow zone, if you will, the high school is actually hundreds of points from growing into the red zone last year.
For attendance?
So...
For attendance?
Yeah, for attendance. Riley Creek actually made some improvements. They're in the green zone, I would say, at this point. But attendance, we somehow address attendance at school.
Are those qualifying, like, were they absent for the whole day or were they half-days?
Sure. So the definition of regular attendance is 90% or higher. So that's one day a month. So you're allowed approximately 10 days. Anything below that, you are substandard. So think about, and that's attendance for anything, whether it's personal business, illness, extended holiday, whatever it is, it doesn't matter. They're just days and days. And that's just, and that's not even including the number of hours that our, our students are gone for approved school activities. If you were to start to count those, we would, as all kids, yeah, you'd see the ripple effect. But I think that's, when you're comparing apples and apples, that's something that all schools have that as a part of their attendance factor. Two more I have, figured to think about. One was professional, apologize for my scribbling here, professional practices and development. So I know we've had a lot of conversations about attracting and retaining quality staff. And so in order to do that, you need to have strong instructional programs, you need to have a curriculum available to give the kids, our students, the best that we can, and to continue to support development and best practices in instruction. And then finally, no surprise based on your other conversations, technology. So these are just, these were kind of my thoughts, again, knowing that the work that we are going to be required to do and not to, not to be self-serving, but any goals that we create can, I think, can address any of these quite easily. Now, with that said, I've thrown a lot of things out for you to consider. Any reactions or ah-hazs or you're going the wrong way or...
I think all those things are important. I'm just looking at like board goals too. For me, I think that complete the PSP, it's, to me, it's wholly student-driven, educational.
Mm-hmm. It leads everything, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, it starts there.
I think the engage community is important because I think that's a basic board goal or board, not requirement, but a function.
Part of the strategic goal too, if I remember correctly.
Yeah. I think though, that also the long-range plan, planning to me plays a big role because I think that there's, with the correct long-range planning of figuring out where we are now, where we want to be, and can we make some changes that are positive as a result of, well, or as a result of long-range planning that's effective. Some big changes could really increase some of those lower tiers.
So to clarify, are you talking long-range facility planning or are you talking...
I'm looking at long-range facility planning.
Facility planning.
Yes, sorry.
No, that's, I just wanted to clarify because that strategic plan is also long-range planning, but, but obviously related to our current...
Related to facility, yes.
Yeah.
To be specific, yeah.
Good.
I think that the community engagement and the long-range facility planning are, those are tied direct, I mean, they're tied pretty closely, I think, just in where that planning is going.
Right. Yeah. Long-range planning, facility planning, true engaging, the community, blah, blah.
Building, capacity, if you will.
Yeah, there's another one of our PSP words, is capacity.
Words of its...
Okay.
I think you've done a great job.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, if it helps kind of guide, guide the instructor, guide your discussion.
I feel like we get stuck in very simple goal, I mean, goals should be simple, but I think that...
But I think it's like Luke said, goals can also be somewhat lofty. And again, the, the magic of, of, I think, trying to create goals, not just because you have to create goals, but really isn't something you're behind and you want to do. But they, so they need to be broad enough to give you some flexibility so that you can evaluate your success versus saying, yep, check the box, check, 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 which is more what this one was, which is okay. But you're, you're now at a point, I think, where you're ready to make some, some maybe broader goals that can, and maybe it's only two or three of these, but have qualities of all of these in those three, if you know what I'm saying.
And I, and I do like what you're asking about, like the woodburn there with blending superintendent and board goals, because I think that, I think that's important.
Yeah.
I like the idea of having the bigger picture of goals and then having specific tasks underneath them.
Kind of like, I think it was, was that the Pendleton model, I think, that had kind of that?
Yes.
Is that Kaloyt Scherling?
Yeah.
So do we want to...
Turn you loose?
Yes, I do. Go ahead, take care of it. Yeah, pick out four kind of headers, so to speak, and then four or five headers and then...
Where are we at in the, in the digital arts? I know that's a big one that you're working on this year. I mean, that's kind of a lofty goal too.
It is. So that's the creation of a new potential course pathway. So it originated with a $25,000 grant from Europe. And so with that funding, we've been able to purchase 15 high-end computers with all of the software that goes with that, that relates to the, the publishing, the creative, gosh, I should know these offhand, my wife uses them every day. But with the idea of also doing some simulated businesses with, you know, with a T-shirt design and promotional materials and banners, but it's Photoshop and all of that. So that is, and so the goal for that is to introduce kids into some of those skills this year and then use this year to align potentially with SWAC in what their digital arts curriculum is and then work backwards so that we can be prerequisites or pathways, if you will, into that field. We've also invested close to $10,000 in a, in new flooring, new electrical wires. All had to be pulled to update that lab, so...
What lab is that?
This is where, in the old senior hall, where we had the two side-by-side computer labs, the typing labs. So the smaller room now is, is that?
Digital arts.
Digital arts, yeah. And it's also going to be used for yearbook, senior seminar, so it's not going to be exclusive just for, for the digital arts program. So that's a, and again, we're hoping at some point McKenzie Lee, you know, has gotten his CTE endorsement in, in instructional technology. And so again, this would be the beginnings of potentially reaching back to eighth grade and then to making that prerequisite into this and so on.
Mr. Wilson, can you, I'm sorry, this is, can you list off those five new courses that we have at the high school this year? Digital arts is one of them.
So digital arts is one and then drama.
Right.
And creative arts, oh, sorry, creative writing.
There was a Spanish three too, right?
And Spanish three.
I feel like there was something else. Is there another art class too?
Hmm, I don't think so. So that was four new courses then.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just get that question a lot, I just, you know, talking to people, they're like, oh, you know, I, I tell them, oh, there's, you know, there's five new courses at the high school. One of them being drama, that's, I don't think it's ever been offered at the high schools or...
It's been, it's been a while.
So that just tying into, you know, the student achievement, academic achievement, but the attendance too, you know, I mean, kids wanting to, to attend because of, you know...
Right, there's more, maybe more exciting, more courses of interest.
Right.
Right. That engagement part. So again, that engagement comes back to, do our teachers know how to design lessons that are going to keep kids engaged? What happens when they're engaged? They're going to learn. They're going to want to come to school. What happens when they come to school? They're attending now, right? Rather than, oh, I'll just sit at home because I can just do that and come in and take the test and be fine or whatever. Of course exaggerating, but...
I think one of the things with community engagement with, that I think about, and I know you probably all think about it too, is just the amount of homeschool, the kids that are homeschooling in our district and, and, you know, how, how do we get them to...
Yeah, so, yeah, have, have we done a formal study of why?
Right.
You know, it, I, I don't believe it's all, you know, many, I don't believe it's all faith-based.
Right.
You know, there are people who choose to do even the digital, digital learning options that are available through, you know, K-12 or Oregon, or Connections. There are three, two or three, yeah, that are, are just options for kids. And a lot of time, that at least from my observations at the high school last couple of years, is because they have become disengaged with the school. Their attendance issues, and so they think it's easier to do it at home where there's less pressure, less peer interact, whatever their personal reason is. But then they find out that that digital classroom is probably more difficult than it is if you'd just gone to school and be a part of the traditional process. So, but yeah, I, I hear what you're saying. You know, we had a few homeschool students who came back again at the high school levels, my, my, more of my knowledge base, but it was, you know, three or four. Now, I will, Tom would tell you that because of a push on attendance at Riley Creek of being a little bit more on, on the ball as far, hey, you've missed eight days, you've missed 10 days, you've missed 12 days. And whereas our philosophy shouldn't be around being punitive, you know, there are some point, parent, you have to be in school till you're 18. So if I'm not attending school for whatever reason, rather than go through the punitive spot, they say, okay, I'm just going to homeschool my kid. So again, that's because they're escaping, what are they escaping by not attending school that leads them to make other choices, which again, may be good or bad. But Tom, what would you think are some of the, is that fair to say that as far, in some situations?
Yeah, I think overall in attendance, I mean, we actually had some homeschool kids that was faith-based, faith-based, but they came back for science because of Corey Simmons. And they came back for computers because they didn't have a setup like we had at school. So I, I think the more we can promote programs like that, like this digital arts thing, the more we can do things like that, that parents cannot teach at home or the kids cannot do them, that is going to draw them in. And, and I think, you know, we kind of, for a while, there are a lot of parents, oh, the school's stupid, you know, high school's terrible, Riley Creek's mean to the kids, whatever. You know, the more we can present in the community that we have a good program here, and I think we're, we're definitely heading in the right direction, I think we're going to start seeing more of them return. But you're right, the more we push attendance, that's when some of the parents will, oh, homeschool. And that's the state's problem. The state makes it too easy to homeschool. They're, they need to jump through more hoops to allow the kids to homeschool.
I'll add one more thought here and we, we got about 20 minutes left for our other meeting. One of the, you guys didn't have the benefit of going through the lighthouse program, but one of the core lessons there was that districts who made big improvements in student achievement typically focused on one thing per school year. You know, they picked up, cherry picked one, one particular issue, you know, math, attendance, whatever, whatever it was. And so I just want to make sure we don't get too, we want to, you know, yeah, I just don't want us to get too broad in our...
Right.
I, I mean, like I say, the, the, the OSBA training is going to take up a lot all by itself.
And I think the community engagement is just something, it's an ongoing goal for the board, just in general, communication and bringing that communication back to the district.
It's an ongoing improvement.
Right, right.
Yeah.
So...
I think we could be stronger.
Right. So let me suggest this. If you want us, it sounds like we're getting a good consensus of these top three. Why don't you use your time that you have left tonight to kind of talk through this a little bit more? Maybe start to wordsmith and just call those your board goals. Because that's really one of the goals of tonight was to establish your board goals. As a part of this continuous school improvement process, that is going to be a part again of student success plan, all the, everything you're going to be starting hearing about, let me bring that back to you in September with those improvement goals, which are going to include achievement, professional development, best practices. Then, and then if you wanted to, in addition to somehow consolidate your technology goal in some way to be so that it, it doesn't fall off the, off the table. What would you think of that?
I like that.
I, I actually already have, as a part of our response to getting a improvement grant, what I just described to you is done and been, already been approved by ODE. In order for us to meet our next level for the new funding in 2021, that has to be beefed up. But I think in essence, it would meet your district improvement goals, if you will, that we could at that point say are a part of your, your, things that you're going to ask us to monitor. But this is going to be your focus as a, as a board. Sound good?
Yeah.
All right. I'm going to clear the red off then and I'll be happy to be your stride or, yeah.
PSP part of our education. Just continues the board, board education.
Sure.
So for those watching at home, whatever, PSP stands for the Promise Scholarship Program. It was a, something this board applied for as an opportunity through the Oregon School Board Association. And it's, like I said, a 15 or 16-hour training for the board to help them be the best board that they can be, not only beyond their ma, their major roles, responsibilities, but some other responsibilities as well. So I'm just going to spread these out a little bit and then again, we can just kind of brainstorm. So we had a community engagement. And we had a long-range facility plan.
People out there hanging out waiting to get in.
Yeah.
Technically, they can come in.
I'll find out. Yeah, there sure seems to be a lot of them. I don't know.
Could be the freshman orientation.
Oh, okay. Maybe they're going the wrong way.
It looks like freshmen.
Yeah, they were probably looking for the other room.
I'll move this over here a little bit more. For our audience wants to come in, they can. Okay, so...
Yeah, complete PSP, I mean, that's kind of just one of those cut and dry.
Okay.
Really need to add any bullets to it other than, I mean, the superintendent evaluation kind of falls under that.
Okay. And then a complete, of course, that says that. I'll put somewhere on training modules or something like that.
And actually, one other one you can put under there, again, back to lighthouses, is creation of the district leadership team or whatever.
Yes, district leadership team.
Yeah. Yeah, community engagement.
Feel free to borrow from other groups.
One of the things that could go under community engagement is the use of community resources for the STEM education that is a form of community engagement.
Okay, so sub-goal might be increase, uh, community involvement in STEM activities?
Yeah.
Do you want it limited to STEM or do you want to say music?
What, is it STEAM where you add art into it?
You do?
I'm going to say STEAM.
You want to put STEAM?
Yes.
Okay. You might remember last spring, you asked me to do a staff survey, kind of a cultural survey. At my Title IX meeting on Monday, I got a lead to a pretty reputable one that's designed for parents and kids. So I'm going to be ordering that to see how that aligns with that whole idea of school climate. But as an aside to, to that.
Yeah, I guess, yeah.
So part of community engagement for me, it's like tied to col, the culture, district culture.
Okay.
I'm not sure of my words for it. I mean, I think...
Evaluates... I'll be, I'm just going to put school culture for now.
Okay.
We can word stuff that later.
Yeah, something like on that is increase our community's willingness to invest in our, in our, in our district, in our school.
Okay, increase community involvement? Oh, you made it.
And I guess one other one that would be more geared toward, you know, staff slash community engagement. But we, we talked about, you know, the, the board having some, you know, interaction with the staff in a, in a workshop setting like we did a few years ago. I don't know in what form or when, but...
Was it that breakfast?
Keep it on our radar.
Let's start with the breakfast and then some activities.
Is that happening again this year?
Oh, we have the breakfast, but it's not assigned to be an activity with the board.
Do we want tech to be its own bullet or its own header, header? Or do we want to put it under, I guess, long-range facility plan?
Could include...
Could hold tech in there.
And it wouldn't be, it, sorry, it would be appropriate potentially in that frame of mind to have it be part of the facility plan as it relates to infrastructure and networking. But then on the instructional side, you include integrating technology into instruction.
Right.
Which would be the secondary goals.
Right.
So I'll just put tech, networking for now. Infrastructure. And then along the line of continuing the work of the study that was done, develop timeline for, I guess we probably just define what next steps are.
Yeah.
Is, are, is next step a new K-12 school? Is, is next step a new K-12 school? Are we ready to make that as a public statement? Or are we not quite there yet? So, I'm just going to call that next steps.
Yeah. That sounds good.
Because we may find out that this community can't afford a fifty million dollar bond. But they could afford a million to make a new CTE bill or whatever it is. Would it be, I think it would be appropriate, not only are we talking, when we're talking about the facility plan, but addressing a lot of the deferred maintenance.
Yeah.
Mr. McGinnis was here, he probably would put that on there.
Yeah, it would have been done already.
We've no, we've never really, I know we did the facility, they gave us that book.
Yes.
Breaking down the cost and anything, but we've never really created a, a list.
You're right.
Ranking.
You're right.
Large, large, large capital projects to give us kind of a.
Yeah, and that's.
I think that would be, I mean, in that respect.
I'm actually.
I mean, I mean, that is a maintenance plan, like you say, but I think.
Well.
We got it all broken down on what it would cost, but we never, we never ranked on where things should start.
Right. So, again, I'm kind of starting that work now with, actually with Jack as well and our custodians. So, as I've been trying to, where the maintenance at as well, we know that there have been some things that have been ignored for a long time. You know, I was at Riley Creek up on the roof last week and find out that there's a whole system of fans that have been turned off because the computer that used to run them isn't there anymore. Well, why? Or, or the condition of the fall area in the, in the playground. You know, are pebbles better than rubber or versus environment versus wood chips versus? Okay, so where does kid's safety at the playground match up with resealing the parking lot versus resealing the playground? So, that, developing that list, getting what those costs, balancing that with what we have available as a resource. And can we begin to say, okay, that's a, this, this is an immediate versus this is a three-year, five-year? I don't have the expertise to be that keen into maintenance, but I'm sure there are other people that could help me develop that plan if that's what we decided we want to do here.
Yeah, I remember, I feel like we talked to Roy about it at some point, just trying to.
Yeah, I do too.
Maybe not on the big picture level, but just, you know, a punch list of, you know, projects and, and have them prioritized.
Well, in this current setup, we've got like three items under each one, is that a, it's a good start?
I think that's plenty to do.
That's plenty to do? Okay. Staff, let me pull this back through, you guys have any thoughts or advice for the board or concur or?
Concur.
So, I should probably get these, I think you made good progress on these tonight. Would you like another work session in September or would you like me during this month to wordsmith this? Maybe go over if you have, get it, put it out as a work document to all of you and then?
I think we could, we could clean that up in a regular meeting unless, well, well, and we're going to have, we're going to be with Renee again, what, next week?
Right.
When not, we can't use, we can't use that time.
No, but the idea that if you did some, if you did some collective work digitally, like a Google Doc or something, where you could put in comments and then at the September meeting, September eighteenth, yeah, September eighteenth meeting, then you could adopt these. And at the September meeting, I would also bring to you the, that district improvement goals as it relates to student achievement and so on.
I think we're at a Google Doc stage.
Yeah, I think so too.
That could be one of the goals, everybody using.
More tangible, specific?
Anybody else have anything to add for the moment?
Tracy, do you have these down for me?
I do.
All right.
All right, we'll adjourn the work session at five fifty-six PM.